Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, August 15th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Tonight, we're in regular session, and our first item of business is to establish a quorum, and we have all members of council with us tonight. The next item is communications, and I will mention something that we spoke about last week in committee meeting, but I feel like this would be a good idea to mention it again, that council members have received from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control an application for 74 North Court Street. It's a transfer, it would be a transfer of a liquor license from Lamb's Garden, and this would be for D-2 and D-2X. And if there would be any response in opposition to this, council members would need to make that response by September 1. And that's the only communication item I have. Are there other communications from our council members? If none, oh, it's Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. Just two quick items. One, a student member of the Environment and Sustainability Commission made a very nice video of the Beautification Day project at Mike Stanley Park, and the government channel has put it on the city's website, and it's also on the Ohio University Sustainability Playlist. And it's quite nice. So if you are thinking about the hard work that you did, Member Swank, in that park a few months ago, you can go revisit the video.
It's like they still have the blister sign. You too.
Yeah. And then just the other item is that the city and the county and the university are collaborating together on a Bike to Work Day event in September. It will be approximately one month from today, on September 14th in the morning. We are encouraging people to bike to work or to class. This is an event that the League of American Bicyclists usually holds in May, and we've discovered that that's not a great time for us in Athens. Students are gone, some of us aren't in our positions, and so the committee agreed this year to move it to September, and we're looking forward to that. So September 14th, ride your bike to work. Thank you, President Nisley.
Thank you. Okay. Any other communications from council members? If not, we'll move on to reports from other elected officials. Law Director Eliason.
No.
Okay. Mayor Patterson.
I just have a few tonight, President Nisley. First of all, I'd like to thank the individuals who were doing the ASL signing during the Athens Community Arts and Music Festival this weekend. It was well attended, and I really believe even those who were in attendance who were not audibly impaired were certainly appreciative that the city was working to have those, and we, I would say, successfully used our NOPEC events money to have that happen. So it was a great event. I'd also like to share that I've received a number of phone calls and emails about the study of Court Street in the future, at some point being two-way. As a reminder, it isn't a comprehensive plan to look at traffic flow in the uptown area. You know, I briefly just mentioned that, you know, back in 1960, Court Street was two-way, but it was also the time in which there was no bypass around the city, and we had all of 50, 33, 56. Name a state or county highway that was coming through the city, they all came right through uptown. And so it was switched to one-way, and then it is what it is today. But it isn't a comprehensive plan, and we are going to look at it as we dive into the planning for the Washington Street improvement and State Street improvement, and also catching that one piece of Mill Street as we do that ODOT tap grant project. The other thing I want to share with council, I provided all of you the RIL Race Equity and Leadership Council Assessment Report. I do want council to acknowledge that this is our baseline data. So this is baseline to understand where our city staff is at in their understanding of systemic racism and racial equity. They have already started going through the normalization training. We will continue down that path. We have several trainings coming up for all city employees, and, but this is extremely informative. It is broken down, if you want to take a quick glance, and I don't want to eat up President Nisley council's time with this, but you'll look, and you'll see, most of it, as you look at this, is broken down by departments. There was one area where they aggregated a number together just because of the low numbers. As an example, the code office has seven employees down there, so they, what they did was they aggregated a number of departments together. I am reaching out to Race Equity and Leadership and asking them that if they would at least pull two departments and make sure I can look at those independent of that aggregation to get a better understanding as to where we're starting from within our departments. It's also broken out by management and non-management, so it's pretty detailed. And then what we will do is make sure we can make this available to anyone, it is a public document now, but anyone who's interested. But again, if you look at it, I would contend that we are, from as a baseline, we are looking fairly good, and will continue to improve when it comes to understanding of systemic racism and racial equity. So again, just wanted council to have that, so you could look at it. Please feel free to reach out to myself or to Ron Lucas if you have any questions about that assessment at this point in time. We'd be more than happy to discuss the results, but just bear in mind that I do want further shred out of a couple departments that are in the aggregate.
Great. Thank you so much. All right. We'll move on now with ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 9422 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to redesignate Hocking Athens Perry Community Action, known as HAPCAP, to administer the Athens Public Transit Bus System, introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that we adopt 9422.
Second.
This has been discussed in committee, it's been read twice. I'd like to read the pertinent section before the vote. The mayor is hereby authorized to redesignate Hocking Valley Athens Perry Community Action, HAPCAP, as designated guarantee to carry out activities of the Athens Public Transit Bus System financed under the Federal Transit Administration and administered by the Ohio Department of Transportation for a period from January 1st, 2023, through December 31st, 2025, including all procurement required to operate and administer the system. A copy of the memorandum of understanding is attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and second for approval. Any comments or questions from council members?
Just a real quick question. I see this is for a three-year period. Is this what we normally do? Okay. Great. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council members, or elected officials, or our audience members? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. 9522 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to redesignate Hocking Athens Perry Community Action, HAPCAP, as contract administrator for the Ohio Rural Inter-City Bus Program, known as GOBUS, introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that we adopt 9522.
Second.
Thank you. I'd like to read the first section. The mayor is hereby authorized to redesignate Hocking Athens Perry County, or Community Action, HAPCAP, as designated guarantee to carry out activities of the Ohio Rural Inter-City Bus Program, GOBUS, financed under the Federal Transit Administration and administered by the Ohio Department of Transportation for a period from January 1st, 2023, through December 31st, 2025, including project administration for implementation of all of the GOBUS intercity routes. A copy of the memorandum of understanding is attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval. Do we have any comments or questions from council members, elected officials, or administration, and any from the audience? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. 9622 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a mutual assistance agreement with the South Central Ohio Major Crimes Unit, and this is introduced by Councilmember McCary.
Thank you, President Nisley. I would like to make a motion that we adopt 9622.
Second.
This has also been read at previously committee meetings, and I will go ahead and read from the ordinance. An ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a mutual assistance agreement with the South Central Ohio Major Crimes Unit, whereas said agreement is to identify areas of mutual assistance, provide arrest authority for the South Central Ohio Major Crimes Unit officers when working inside the city of Athens, and to establish general guidelines and general policies governing instances of mutual assistance, which shall be provided without cost to the requesting party. Section 1, the Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to enter into a mutual assistance agreement with the South Central Ohio Major Crimes Unit, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its passage and approval by the mayor.
Any questions or comments? All right. From our council members, or administration, elected officials, or our audience members? And if none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. We now have ordinances for second reading, and I will read through the title. I will pause briefly to see if there are any comments or questions. 8522 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 29, Housing Regulations, Chapter 29.36, Prohibited Actions, to add Section 29.36.02, the tenant's right to pay to stay. And that is introduced by Councilmember Ziff. If no comments or questions, then we will move on to 9822. This is an ordinance amending the 2022 Appropriation Ordinance and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell. And if no comments or questions, we'll move on to 9922. This is an ordinance authorizing retroactive pay for the board manager, and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell. If no comments or questions, we'll move on to 122. This is an ordinance amending the 2022 Staffing Levels and Compensation, authorized by Ordinance 14121, to add a part-time receptionist in the mayor's office, introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee. If no comments or questions, I will move on to 10122. This is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to accept bids where necessary and enter into contracts for design and construction of city hall renovations. Project Number 356, Phase 1, Conference Rooms, introduced by Councilmember Crowell. And if no comments or questions on this ordinance, we will now move on to ordinances for first 10222 is an ordinance enacting Athens City Code Title 51, Economic Development, Section 51.01, Athens Community Improvement Corporation, known as ACIC, authorizing execution of necessary documents and agreements to create and implement the ACIC, and approving the plan and authorizing agreement and code of regulations with ACIC. And this is introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Nisley. This is an ordinance through which council has the opportunity to facilitate bringing forward an economic development tool for the city. And I'm just going to read the "whereas's," and then there's also a significant attachment, but I think that our region and community are well-served by creating access to the economic development tools that we can. So, whereas the city is authorized and empowered under the Ohio Revised Code, Chapter 1724, to create a Community Improvement Corporation, or CIC, to aid in implementing the city's economic development objectives. Under state law, a CIC may be designated by a municipality to advance industrial, commercial, distribution, or research development within its jurisdiction. A CIC may acquire property, improve property, construct and equip buildings, incur debt, and issue revenue bonds in order to carry out its participation in a city's development plan, and promote the welfare of the city's citizens, stabilize the economy, and provide employment. Whereas this ordinance authorizes the creation and designation of an Athens CIC, which will provide additional tools for the city's economic development efforts, including the ability to authorize the issuance of industrial revenue bonds and notes in accordance with Ohio Revised Code, Chapter 165, in order to create and preserve jobs and employment opportunities within the city of Athens. So with those "whereas's," then we are authorizing the establishment of the Athens CIC and all of the terms and conditions that are laid out in the attached adendums.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from council members? Yes, Councilmember Swank?
I have a couple related questions. In reading this 24-page document, I see that the committee needs to meet at least twice during the course of the year. Any idea, and I know it's hard to project about an organization that doesn't exist yet, how many times that committee ideally would meet to achieve the goals that I think we all agree are something we're striving to do?
That's a great question. I feel strongly that initially, the CIC should meet monthly until we kind of get things really rolling, and then we can reassess, and it might be bimonthly. But I feel that it's really no different than the Athens County Economic Development Council, or the Port Authority, to where we're going to need to meet monthly, at least for the first year, if not longer.
Okay. And the related question had to do with something we talked about last week, and that was the makeup of the appointed members, and I had suggested that we broaden that to four businesspeople instead of two. Your point was well taken, Mr. Mayor, about a quorum, even going from four to five. If you're going to meet 12 times a year, it could make it impossible. The question then becomes, do you foresee the opportunity, as this committee develops, learns, and plays out, that there might be a possibility for additional members to broaden the business base of input into that committee?
I do. I also feel that as things evolve and it grows, and we start to understand all the different levers that a CIC has to use, we will probably bring in individuals ad hoc to look at things. But no, your point was well taken, is to the individuals, or the positions, I should say, the sectors that would feed into this, but we have two commitments for the initial appointment from the public, that both individuals, I think, are going to be strong serving on this. I can tell them, because I can tell you, because they've already said yes to me, that they would like to serve. One of them is Leslie Schaller, the co-owner of Casa de Uva, as well as one of our strong leaders down at AceNet. The other is Mark Snyder, who said that he would also like to serve. So, but again, as we understand it, and we start to really expand and grow with the CIC, and I believe we will, that we could, as we see the need, include other community members.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions?
This is just a...
Councilmember Spies, yes.
Thank you. This is just a minor one, but clearly there's been CICs around for a long time, so I'm wondering who you're getting some expertise from, or models that you're going with, people that can help, that have already established one before. I'm just curious about that process, because that's an important way of making sure you can hit the ground running.
Sure. You know, there used to be a CIC in Athens. It was the Athens County Community Improvement Corporation, and there is a number of people who served on that that are still here, and so I will likely reach out to them as we're moving this forward. But, you know, with Law Director's work, with my understanding of the CIC, you know, I have been to OML enough times and engaged in everything from downtown redevelopment districts, and understanding how they work, to understanding how an opportunity zone works, and now understanding how a CIC works and the power associated with the CIC, you know, I think that we're in a good place. Again, I have historical data to go back and look at, historical information from the previous CIC, that I can also, you know, look at and understand, but I think we're in a good place moving forward.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Yes. Yes. Mr. Delak.
Rob Delak. I live on Morris Avenue here in the city. Just a maybe follow-up question for the mayor. I'm curious, this is a tool, obviously. I'm wondering if there's any projects in mind already that this tool is being adopted for, or is it just sort of open, you're looking for projects?
No, I mean, it's, thank you for asking. There are several things that we are looking at, and have been looking at for a number of years. We are certainly looking at a way to continue to progress the armory moving forward, and being redeveloped and used, and hopefully become the home to anchor tenant, and anchor tenant in that building. The CIC would certainly be helpful in that effort. It'd also be helpful for things that we don't qualify for at this point. The government can't apply for historic tax credits for a historic building, the CIC can, or at least it can help facilitate to have someone who has the ability to utilize those historic tax credits to be a developer and help moving the building along. So there's that. There are properties that we have in the city that, you know, we've had plans, and the plans really didn't pan out the way we envisioned them to years and years ago. One in particular, 83 Columbus Road, a former gas station the city acquired, and, you know, we had plans, we thought we had plans, those plans just never came to fruition, and therefore a CIC could be helpful in the disposition of that property, possibly the selling of the property, or can take it on and work with a developer to develop the property, because there's a lot of things can be done there. Out on Moore Ridge, we have the former city landfill, which has been a real challenging parcel, and something that the Service Safety Director and I have been looking at, about 26 acres of land, and what do we do with it, other than monitor methane, you know, coming from the vents? Serious. So, and there's, there are other things that we could certainly use that for, so it's not being, it's not that there aren't any projects that we're looking at. There are actually quite a few potential opportunities for the CIC.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other questions or comments? All right. Thank you. 10322 is an ordinance accepting a 25-year sanitary sewer easement from Ohio University, located at the Clippinger Center. This is introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Nisley. And yeah, this does exactly what the title says. It's, the city is accepting a 25-year sanitary sewer easement from Ohio University for the sewer that is at the Clippinger property at Ohio University.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments or questions? If not, we'll move on to 10422. This is an ordinance amending the 2022 Appropriation Ordinance and Ordinance 7220, authorizing design engineering of the city sewer system improvements, Project Number 330, introduced by Councilmember McCary.
Thank you, President Nisley. We've discussed this in committee and had Director Stone provide a great overview. This project includes upgrades to existing city lift stations and installation of new gravity-enforced main sewer sections. So this is a request to increase the total expenditure authorized from $1,16653 to $1,410,653. And specifically, these lift stations are at Richland Avenue and State Route 682, also one at State Route 56, and we're going to be bringing sewage into the city across the river and down the trunk line by Petun Stadium via the force main. Let's see. I believe that's the pertinent information I'd like to share. Folks have questions?
Any questions or comments? If none, then we will move on to 10522. This is an ordinance amending the Athens City Code Title 3, Administrative Provisions, Chapter 3.07, Administrative Departments, Boards, and Commissions. Section 3.07.41, Athens Recreation Advisory Board Definitions, introduced by Councilmember McCary.
Thank you, President Nisley. We have talked about this not as recently, but we can certainly explore the benefits of the change in name for the sake of clarifying that this board does not include oversight of the arts component in our city's Arts Parks and Recreation Department. This is an opportunity for us to consider the extent to which it may be clearer to folks interested in understanding the scope of this commission's responsibility to specifically rename that advisory board, excuse me, not commission.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Yes, Councilmember Swank?
If I read this right, I'm not sure that's what this ordinance is about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This ordinance is about something that the mayor has made very clear, and I would agree with him 100%. The way our code reads now is the Arts Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, which I was a former member and chair, makes recommendations to the mayor. That basically makes the mayor the de facto mayor and APR director. This is changing that to read that the administration, this is definition, administration means the director of the Arts Parks and Recreation Department. The board would report to that individual, who in turn reports directly to the mayor.
All right. Thank you for that clarification, Councilmember Swank. Okay. All right. Yes, Mayor Patterson?
I just want to say, Member McCary, that's a, trust me, that's an understandable mistake with as much conversation as there has been around this topic. So, no fault to you, it, no, as Councilmember Swank was saying, it's just, it's changing administrative, as it reads.
Different issue. Thank you for that, Councilmember Swank.
All right. If no other comments or questions, we'll move on to 10622. This is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to submit an application and enter into a water pollution control loan fund, known as the WFPCLF agreement, for planning, design, and/or construction, designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan, and this is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 10622, and that the timeliness of utilizing this loan is important for the city to be able to have some savings.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second for suspending the rules. All those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Crowell.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to adopt 10622.
Second.
Thank you, Member Grace. I'll go ahead and read this and provide a little further explanation for our suspension. This was actually introduced last week by Member McCary in the City and Safety Services Committee. This, as the title indicates, authorizes our Service Safety Director to submit the application for this zero-interest, long-term Ohio EPA loan. And this loan has some... And this loan has some rather unique requirements, as described by our Service Safety Director last week. We have a lot of sewer work going on, and sewer regionalization, both in the county, accepting county sewer, as well as work within the city, and we need to keep this sort of moving for Project 317. There is work on Dairy Lane for sewer and water and sidewalk, as well as Stagecoach Road sewer. And it's not, it's not isolated to the county sewage acceptance, but we have done this type of loan in the past. And I'll just remind council, as Director Stone reminded us last week, that in 2019, Ordinance 144 addressed this issue. We need to get bids, and then there is a requirement to have a one-reading resolution. This funding source is very advantageous to us in terms of zero interest and long-term, and so we'd like to get as much done with this as possible, and that's why I'm asking for the approval today.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and second. Are there additional questions or comments? Yes, Councilmember Swank?
Zero interest is great, do we know the term of the loan?
So I clarified, it's 30.
30 years, okay.
Any other questions?
Previous iteration went for 40 years, and this is, you have to renominate a project every year, even if you've been approved before. That's just the requirement of the EPA, is if you don't proceed within that timeframe, you have to renominate. And so when we go to renominate it here, the term is 30 years, is what they've done.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 10722 is an ordinance amending the 2022 Appropriation Ordinance and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nysley. I'll go ahead and read through these appropriations. Section 1, the 2022 Appropriation Ordinance, 150-21, is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums: $7,500 to the general fund for codification of changes to the city code. So as discussed last week, these are the general neutral changes to the code, and getting our website updated, and other ordinances added to the system that we use for our online municipal code. $21,700 to the general fund for an Ohio History Connection reimbursement grant for virtual history displays. This is, type of grant is one where the city spends the money and then is reimbursed, and we would like to do more sites, like you may have seen on Court Street for the Berry Hotel, within the city of Athens, for this virtual history connection through this grant opportunity. $20,000 to the sewer debt fund, it's a matter of paying our bills, and $2,170 to the sanitation fund. This is a Ohio EPA litter grant, recycling and litter prevention grant. The city applied for this grant to install some security cameras to monitor illegal dump sites. Thank you, President Nysley.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions? All right, now that's been read for the first time. We now have announcements and other business, and the first one will be that our committees will meet next Monday night, and so if council members have agenda items, to please present those to the clerk of council by Wednesday. And our next item is confirming the mayor's appointment for an alternate to serve on the Historic Preservation Commission. And Sarah, Councilmember Grace, Sarah Grace has that information.
Thank you, President Nysley. It is my honor to make a motion that we confirm Tim Anderson to serve as an alternate on the Historic Preservation Commission. He is a professor in the Department of Geography at Ohio University, and has a particular interest in historic preservation, as he currently serves as a member of the Ohio Historic Site Preservation Advisory Board, and his current research and teaching interest focus in part on regional patterns of vernacular architecture. So I, as I said, I'm honored to make a motion that we confirm this individual.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, and we welcome Mr. Anderson to the Historic Preservation Commission, and thank him for his volunteer work, inhibits. Okay. We, at the end of our meeting, always have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered on the agenda. Is there anyone wishing to speak tonight? If not, I...
Quick question, which would, if I could take this hat off and put that one, can I just sit up here and ask the question? Folsom is in this category, yeah. This is for Mr. Stone. It's an easy question. For those of us that come uptown from time to time, and come up College Street, we see the back-end parking, and even though we could ask this in private, many people watch these videos, or watch our proceedings. When will that be ready for people to park there? Because like, we see people parking, pulling in, backing in, some still parallel parking.
Thank you, Members Swank. This week, you know, we've got the signs in now, and the meters are getting installed. So, you know, my goal is to have it done prior to move in, unless some, this weekend, some, unless some unforeseen event prohibits that, that's the plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. All right. We're ready to adjourn, I believe, if we have a motion.
So, second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are adjourned at 7:36 PM. Thank you very much.